Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the board meeting of ISD 279 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.02. In the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means, Internet video conference. Consistent with current state and federal pandemic guidelines, Superintendent Corey McIntyre and myself, Board Chair Mike Ostafi, have determined that due to health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical or prudent. As a result, it is unfeasible for at least one board member, the superintendent or general counsel, to be physically present at the regular meeting location. It is also not feasible for members of the public to attend at the regular meeting location. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of this meeting will also be made available on the district website. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is now called to order at 6:01 PM on May 26, 2020. Board members joining us by video conference, please respond when I call your name. Director Jessica Craig.
Here.
Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Here.
Director Tanya Simons.
Here.
Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Present.
Director Heather Douglas.
Present.
Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Present.
And I, Mike Ostafi, am present. Also joining us in this video conference today are cabinet members and our board secretary. With that, first on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Simons, will you please recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Simons. Number two is additions to the agenda. Board members, do you have any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second to accept the agenda?
Second.
A roll call vote, is there any discussion? A roll call vote will be taken by the board secretary. Board members, please respond with aye or nay when Sheri calls your name.
Director Douglas.
Aye.
Director Muscata-Jones.
Aye.
Director Simons.
Aye.
Director Ostafi.
Aye.
Director Dawson-Walton. We didn't hear you, Kelsey.
Aye.
There we go.
Director Craig.
Aye.
Motion passes, what?
Yeah, so six to zero.
Okay, thank you. So the agenda is adopted. The next item is number four, audience opportunity to address the board. Because this regular school board meeting is not being conducted in person, two options were provided for individuals to address the board. Individuals could complete an online forum and have their comments read out loud, or a voicemail message could be submitted to the board secretary and those messages will be played at a regular board meeting. Comments submitted to be shared in the public forum must comply with the guidelines for addressing the board published on the district website. Comments submitted using the online forum are limited to 3,000 characters. Voicemail messages will be played for up to three minutes, so please keep that in mind as you leave your message in the future. The chair will accept comments in the order submitted based upon timestamps within the 20 minutes of time allowed for this agenda items, subject to the discretion of the chair. Comments do not comply with guidelines and are those submitted after 12:00 PM on the date of the meeting will not be shared in the public forum, but will be provided to board members after the meeting. Sheri, will you please read the comments submitted through the online forum, followed by the playing of any voicemail messages received for this board meeting?
Chair Ostafi, board members, Superintendent McIntyre, cabinet members, we received one online form submittal and zero voicemail messages. So at this time, I'll read the submitted comments. Received on May 19, 2:21 PM from Briar Groot. She's a parent of three students in the school district. "I am writing to you not only as a mother of three children who attend Osseo area schools, but as a critical care nurse working with COVID patients. I believe it is important to advocate for my children and their right to an education, even if that means not going along with the mainstream narrative or following the views associated with my political party. The local and national media has managed to incite such fear into our society that we have thrown common sense, logic, and reasoning to the wayside. Our children are the ones who are suffering the most. They have lost months of education, social skills, friendships, and experiences. We robbed them of this because we were afraid. Children are not learning, they are hanging on. Parents are afraid to criticize distance learning because they are afraid it will equate to criticizing the teachers who are doing the best they can. I have not spoken to one parent who believes that distance learning is anything but a failure. Even now, when it has become clear the COVID is not affecting people in the way the models predicted, we continue to plan as if it is going to. There is talk about a second surge when there was never a first surge. When it became very clear that children are not becoming seriously ill with COVID, we allowed the fear of the virus and the fear of the judgment we would face if we didn't go along with what everyone else was doing to influence our decisions. This has to stop. I work with these patients every shift. I am not afraid of COVID or afraid of my family getting COVID. I understand the chances of them becoming seriously ill are extremely low. I am, however, terrified of the thought of my children not returning to school in the fall. I am afraid of what will happen to them socially and developmentally if we continue to deprive them of the in-person education that they deserve. If a parent feels like their child is at too high of a risk or they have a family member at too high of a risk to return to school, allow them to continue distance learning. If your teachers feel unsafe, fit test them and provide them with N95 masks. There are solutions to this problem. Keeping children at home under the guise of distance learning or only educating them on certain days of the week is not an acceptable alternative to the education they deserve. I implore you to use common sense and look at what is going on around you. Are children getting seriously ill with COVID? Are essential workers becoming ill at an alarming rate? Are the staff in charge of managing the children of essential workers at the district-sponsored childcare sites becoming seriously ill? This is one of a few times I have felt strongly enough about a topic to write a letter making my opinion known. My children are counting on you to do the right thing. My children are counting on you to provide them with the education they are entitled to." Briar Groot.
Thank you, Sheri, and thank you, Ms. Groot, for writing in. With that, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. Just want to make a few brief comments tonight as we're getting near the end of the school year. It's really our last board meeting before the end of the school year. And just a few updates for the board and comments for our staff families and graduates coming up with the class of 2020. I just want to, as we end the current school year, I want to say thank you to our families for their patience, their support and understanding as we've navigated through the last few weeks and really worked through all the unknowns in this distance learning situation. And we've really appreciated the feedback and recommendations as we continue to try to improve how we support student learning. I also want to thank our staff for their hard work, their leadership, and our teaching staff and our building staff for all the personal care of our students' families. And I'm just really trying to do everything I can. And we're learning new ways to reach out and connect with each other. I know many of our staff are exhausted, they've been working harder than ever before, and really just want to thank them for their hard work over the spring as we close up the school year. I also want to thank our families and our staff and students as we all work together to try to celebrate and honor our students, whether it's moving on to a new school or just moving on to a new grade or ending our career. I've seen some very creative ways to celebrate each other and really honor the hard work of everyone involved here this, the spring and throughout the school year. So thank you so much for that. As we look forward to the summer programming, we continue to monitor guidance from the state level. We do plan to try to provide some direct services to students following those guidelines with some onsite and distance learning options where we can make that work through the summer. And we've already begun our planning for the fall. And it's a little bit unknown where we're going to be at, but we are beginning to put together the work to really work through some different options. We're going to come at it from a developmental perspective and try to innovate what the fall might look like. So first, we need to really kind of invent what the reopening of schools might look like, really work to validate that plan against best practices, our local practices and what research might suggest. And then, as we've been doing all spring, really monitor and be willing to modify and pivot while we see the need to do so. To start, we're going to have a oversight task force or committee that'll work to really dig into four main areas. First, what would our instructional core look like next fall? What were our operations needs going to, what will those operational needs be? Our efforts to connect with stakeholders and communication out on a highly frequent basis and then digging into our resources, which could include our budget and time and staffing models and our facility needs. So we will be digging into those four work groups and putting together recommendations, really to probably work with three likely scenarios, as best we know today. One would be kind of a continuation of the distance learning model or remote learning model now if the public health concerns were to persist in this way. Another option would be, how do we, schools open with probably significant changes or modifications, including social distancing and other alternative schedules, maybe modified capacity. Then lastly, planning for a potential hybrid or blended model where teaching and learning would have some students at home and some at class and really just being prepared for those three different scenarios with some flexibility and understanding that things continue to evolve and change. So we'll be doing that work as we move into the early months of the summer with continuing monitoring the guidance from the state and getting to a point where we can communicate a plan for the fall. So I appreciate everyone's patience and hard work as we begin to really dig into the planning for the fall of 2020. My last update for the evening is, again, just to, a message for our graduates. You know, if I had a chance to speak to them each, I'd love to deliver this message in person. It's awkward to do it over video and I know we'll have some other opportunities, but I just want to say congratulations to the class of 2020. And I know they're not able to celebrate this moment in the way they had hoped and their families had hoped. The pandemic has really changed things beyond our imagination and I share their sadness of not being able to experience the traditional senior year activities in person. It's deeply disappointing that our seniors are not able to share those traditions and stories and laughs in the way they envisioned with their family and friends. They are learning, though. Too often, life turns out to be different than what's imagined. And unfortunately, learning this life lesson at a young age because of the pandemic has caused us to really experience a big shift in their senior year experience. But times like this require us to adapt and innovate and find a shared focus that keeps us all connected during these tough times. And I've seen our seniors really find creative ways to connect and honor their last few weeks of school. So I do believe this is a generation that will make us all stronger and this challenging time will only do more so. And I can't wait to see what this class will accomplish. They will do amazing things, we know they're capable of it. And I believe that this moment will only make them stronger and they will rise to the challenge. So I'm confident that the class of 2020 will go out and change the world and I just want to say congratulations to our graduates. So with that, Chair Ostafi, that'll conclude my superintendent's report.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Hey, first time I put myself on mute and I can't figure it out, so thank you. So our next gen item is school board reports. Director Douglas, do you have a committee report or update?
I do. As you all know, I serve on District 287's school board as well and we have been doing the same things that we're doing here, trying to work through distance learning and making sure we're meeting all the needs of our kids. We have a very diverse group of children with a diverse group of needs. So we have been making some major shifts in the dynamic of how we deliver instruction and the support that is offered through the district and by teachers. And we're just getting ready to wrap up the end of the school year, just like we are here. So that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata-Jones, do you have a committee report or update?
I have two reports tonight. I have the policy report. The policy, the school board policy committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, May 12, 2020, by video conference due to the ongoing pandemic. Board members Jessica Craig, Heather Douglas, and myself attended. Jackie Muscata-Jones. Also attending were Superintendent Corey McIntyre, Executive Director of Human Services Laurel Anderson, and General Counsel Tim Palmetier. During the meeting, the committee reviewed and considered administration's recommendation for the repeal of Policy 312, which is Assignment and Transfer of Principles, the repeal of Policy 417, which is the Employee Chemical Use and Abuse, and the repeal of 436 Addresses of Personnel. The committee agreed that policies were outdated and did not have continued purpose or utility or were addressed in other policies. The committee also discussed revisions to Policy 443 concerning the tutoring of students. The committee agreed to changes to the policy designed to prevent potential conflicts of interest in the provision of private tutoring, which preclude improper use of school district facilities or resources for a private benefit. The committee recommended that the repeal of Policies 312, 417, and 436 and revisions to Policy 443 all be presented tonight for the first reading. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled to be held at the ESC on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, at 4:30 PM. Policy committee meetings are open to the public and community members are encouraged to attend. And I also have a report from the Northwest Suburban Integration School District. We met last Wednesday by teleconference. And much like 287 and us, our board learned that there was some slowing down due to the COVID pandemic, but that, but that some things were switched to digital programming, including professional development. We approved an addition of a .5 full-time specialist to help out working with students. And in several of the areas, there have been a lot of holes that have not been reached. So the .5 FTE will be helping with that. We also received the Magnet Report for Magnet Schools and the enrollment for each of our Magnet Schools. Weaver Lake is full with a waiting list for Magnet spots, which are all of them. And Zane Wood is not full. So if you're interested in STEM, STEAM at Zane Wood is a fantastic option. So we need to tell the story of how wonderful Zane Wood is. And then we also continued updating our policies that hadn't been done for a while. That is the conclusion of my reports.
Thank you, Director Muscata-Jones. Next on the list, Director Simons, do you have a committee report or update?
I do not.
Thank you. Director Dawson-Walton, do you have a committee report or update?
I do, can you hear me?
Yeah, no, we can't.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. I think I spent all day, I don't know, calls doing that. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, so the one committee update I have is AMSD. We met last Friday and, you know, did a legislative wrap-up and update. And then spent time listening to, MDA came to talk about CARES funding. So just learning about that, learning about kind of what Superintendent McIntyre is talking about, just kind of how we move forward. And I'm receiving any guidance as possible from MDE as well as MDH. So, you know, I think the conversation continues, there was a lot of interest. It was a Zoom meeting, so a lot of people attended, so it was really good. Also, we, there's a conference on June 17 for superintendents and school board members focused on Reimagine Minnesota, a lot of equity work that's happening, a lot of, there'll be a discussion around distance learning and the impact that that's had. So I'm really looking forward to that. Again, it's a virtual conference, really lessons learned so far. The next meeting is June 12. And I just, I guess, I just have to say while I have some time, you know, tonight, the community is grieving. And when I think about our education system, more now than ever, I think it's another need to address the trauma that our children are facing in our communities. You know, and really demanding justice and for, you know, victims like George Floyd. And how that relates to our education system right now is just that ensuring our students are safe, that our children are, continue to receive a quality education and it matters so much. And that we are teaching all of our children that Black Lives Matter, that our children, my children, are really seen as vital and contributing to our community. And so I just couldn't, thank you for letting me express that tonight. I just, I'm with a heavy heart tonight, big time. And as we move forward, I, the work that we do is even more critical now than ever, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton, and I think we all share your concerns and emotions on this. Thank you. Director Craig, do you have a report or update?
Not tonight.
Thank you, Director Craig. At this time, I do not have a report or update. Next on the agenda is Presentation Building a Better Future. Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, bear with me, just trying to get the presentation up here. And my technology, I'm just trying to get it going here, so. All right, if you could just confirm that you can see this. Anyone give me an oral confirmation?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Or some at the wrong end of the presentation here, so. All right, thank you for your patience. So good evening, Chair Ostafi and board members and cabinet members. Over the past year, the school district's been engaged in a comprehensive review and needs analysis of our district facilities. As you recall, this past January, the board heard the findings of several study teams regarding facility needs now and into the future. And in April, on April 28, the Facilities Oversight Task Force informed and updated the board on the continued work of our facility planning since they shared, and they shared the recommendations to me as superintendent, which you saw that evening. So at that meeting, you were informed that I would be bringing my recommendations to you at tonight's school board meeting. So on to the next slide here. Tonight, tonight's presentation for you is to receive my recommendations for future board action regarding or building a better future integrated facilities planning process. Before I get to my recommendations, I do want to briefly review how we got to this point. So a little background and purpose here. So this timeline kind of lays out from 2016 up to our current time. And in 2016, when the board approved a comprehensive long-term facilities maintenance plan, it was to address the extensive deferred maintenance needs across the district. That investment included not only mechanical infrastructure such as heating and cooling systems, roofs, parking lots, et cetera, but also included the renovation of learning spaces that staff and students use throughout the school day. In preparation for this work, our facilities team considered the question of what these renovated learning spaces should look like in the future. While this planning work for LTFM was in place, our Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, commonly known as ECMAC, was created. This group made up of community members, staff, and industry experts, included their role to advise the administration on enrollment and capacity-related facility needs. The district also partnered with world engineering and architects to develop a framework for facility planning. In the fall of 2018, ECMAC started to consider a short-term, long-term approach to address capacity concerns in the district. Separately, it also became evident that the district had additional facility needs in the areas of safety and security and our athletic facilities. In January of 2019, the district paused that short-term and long-term approach that ECMAC had been engaged in to allow a more comprehensive facility planning process to begin. In the spring of 2019, we designed an integrated facilities planning process, now referred to as Building a Better Future, because we knew it was important to take a comprehensive approach to facilities planning and to include voices from our parent advisory groups. During the summer and fall of 2019, additional study teams were created to analyze the elementary and secondary instructional design needs of our facilities. When the various study teams completed their work, we were presented with a comprehensive set of findings in the areas of enrollment and capacity, instructional programs, safety and security, and student activities. Teachers and school leaders participated in the study teams and the site visits to other school districts. And our activities coordinators participated in the athletic facilities audit. We were able to gain student perspectives regarding our next-generation learning spaces and we included community voice by bringing the findings in each of our study areas to our district advisory committees for input and feedback as we develop recommendations. Those committees included our ECMAC committee, our district planning advisory council, Risk Emergency Management Advisory Council, and our activities program advisory council. So between July 2019 and December 2019, we continued to plan and seek feedback from study teams and advisory committees as we shared all the group's findings and recommendations at the January 14 school board work session, which now seems long ago with everything we've been through this spring. So back to our timeline here, if you can look at the kind of middle section in red, between, again, between July 2019 roughly and December of 2019, we continued planning and seeking feedback from those study teams and advisory committees as we shared those group findings and recommendations. The next step was the Oversight Facilities Task Force gathered and reviewed those facility recommendations from those studies groups and prioritized the facility projects. They considered funding strategies and developed timelines to create a plan and talked about a plan that would be needed to collect community feedback and ultimately make a comprehensive recommendation regarding facility planning. Back to me as superintendent. The first work of that Facilities Oversight Task Force engaged in was to determine how decisions and recommendations would be made. After significant discussion, decision-making criteria was established. Throughout each meeting, as various recommendations were created and considered, application of this criteria occurred. Let's go back to our timeline here. When we look at January to March of 2020, that Oversight Task Force did exactly that. They gathered and reviewed recommendations from those studies groups, prioritized those projects, identified funding strategies, and developed timelines. The recommendations were developed using that criteria. And the recommendations regarding facility planning were provided to me as superintendent and again reviewed with the board at the April 28 meeting. So moving on to our, to my recommendations for consideration by the board. So moving on to our, to my recommendations for consideration by the board. Actually, I'm going to slide back here, just, I got a few comments before I get into those specifically. As a board, I just wanted to point out, you've spent tremendous time, a tremendous amount of time reviewing input from multiple touchpoints and studying an enormous amount of data. My point is, over the last two months, you've done your homework. And now it's time to make some decisions on the corrective action we should take, given that we studied so intensely at all these pieces over the last, the past months and years. As I was reflecting in determining my recommendations to the board, I considered several key elements. I believe our administration has followed the process endorsed by the board, has responded to the direction from the board along the way, and has done the work you have asked of us throughout this process. The board has been involved and informed at each step of the way through the process, and that process has involved many stakeholders, including numerous teachers, staff, students, and community members, all the study teams, and the district advisory committees. There was a tremendous amount of work done by those involved who brought their exceptional expertise and invested their time, a broad range of perspectives. It worked very hard to get consensus in the recommendations that were brought forward to the Oversight Task Force and now to me as superintendent. The decision-making criteria for the recommendations of the Oversight Task Force were sound. And ultimately, I believe the recommendations brought forward to me are based on a process that was implemented with integrity. So on to the first set of recommendations here, and I'll kind of do them in order that you saw them on April 28th. So recommendation number one is really around those items identified in priority level number one. These are high priority and have available funding sources. And I recommend moving forward with these priority one items immediately after board approval. These items that I've already really, have been identified for potential funding sources, and they have some of the highest need of urgency and safety-related needs. They include looking at professional development for our next generation learning spaces, the Rice Lake addition, wrestling mat hoists at Park Center High School, looking at our senior high turf fields, scoreboards, and the track resurfacing at Maple Grove and our stadium facilities. Those are the items included in priority level number one. I do recommend waiting on priority level number two items, even though they are high priority, additional funding would need to be secured, likely through voter approval to move forward. Recommendation number two, so I do recommend using the funding streams identified by the Oversight Task Force for those items in priority number one. They include, each item has kind of attached to a different item, but operating referendum or general fund through voter approval would be needed through next generation learning needs. The lease levy, which will also be board approved for the Rice Lake addition, long-term facilities maintenance or LTFM, or the stadiums, turf fields, tracks, and scoreboards. Voter-approved bond referendum would be needed for a new school and any secondary additions. And capital projects levy would be used for the wrestling mat hoists needed at Park Center High School. I'm also recommending a final funding strategy be developed in consultation with the district's financial advisor based on the final determination of needs. Recommendation number three, regarding additional study time. I'm in concurrence with the Oversight Task Force, and I do recommend we take the 2020, 2021 school year to identify and evaluate gaps in each of the district facilities as they relate to the other components of the task force recommendations. With the unknown impact of COVID-19 on our day-to-day operations moving into the 2021 school year, it is possible more time could be needed for this work to be final, to develop a comprehensive facility plan. But with that in mind, I specifically recommend additional study areas or additional study in the following areas. The elementary and secondary learning space audit, student services facility needs, community education facility needs, furniture standards at the elementary and secondary level, magnet school programming, career and tech ed programming, middle school athletics, and also looking at options to address undercapacity in our facilities, really looking at any of those undercapacity conditions at elementary and secondary schools and how the proposed construction of a possible new elementary school, Northwest Maple Grove, impacts the overall enrollment and capacity of all of our schools across the system. Regarding timelines, specifically to the Rice Lake Elementary Edition, I recommend that at the June 23rd School Board Meeting, the board approves the addition to the Rice, Rice Lake Elementary School with lease levy funding to allow the planning process to begin. The additional space would likely open in January or maybe February of 2021. This addition would address capacity concerns that have existed for several years and are projected to continue over the next five years. Even with some of the unknown aspects, impacts of COVID-19, I still believe this school will continue to be overcapacity once we are back using our facilities fully. It's important to note that even with this addition moving forward, our tax levy will decrease because it will only be using about $9 million for the project rather than the $15 million of the costs that were initially included in the levy. Regarding our long-term facilities maintenance plan, the Oversight Task Force identified many items that would be eligible for LTFM and would coincide with the bond referendum, should there be one. And there's no timeline for that to be developed yet. But I do recommend that a timeline for a bond referendum be established within that 10-year LTFM plan. And regarding a bond referendum, I would recommend that the board seek voter approval for a bond referendum no earlier than November of 2022. And it could be into even possibly 2023. Specifically, I recommend that the bond question be on the ballot with our operating levy and capital project levy renewal requests likely in November of 2022. That bond referendum would provide funding for up, to possibly build a new elementary school, build additions at the secondary level, and other facility needs that do not have other identified funding sources. The capital projects levy renewal would include elements of safety and security that the study group identified and recommended, and would continue our current digital learning program. The operating levy renewal would continue providing funds for our daily operating costs. It would also cover the cost of operating the potential new elementary school. Going to our voters no earlier than November 22, in November of 2022, allows time to incorporate the results of the additional study areas recommended by the task force and to create and implement a community engagement plan. We would also continue to study enrollment trends and patterns of the impact of COVID-19 on our district finances, probably determining whether and what would be included in a referendum. Recommendation number five, I agree with the Oversight Task Force on the importance of a community engagement approach in the decision-making process for addressing facility needs. I recommend the district develop communication plans to update stakeholders on the building a better future process to inform, and to inform Rice Lake Elementary stakeholders of the proposed facility addition to address overcapacity concerns. I also recommend we develop a comprehensive community engagement plan to solicit community feedback and input as options are identified to address additional facility needs, including potential referendum requests. With a possible bond referendum, operating levy, and capital projects levy in November of 2022, a community engagement plan would be essential. And recommendation number six, regarding the reconvening of the Facilities Oversight Task Force. I agree with the Facilities Oversight Task Force that much of the information necessary for a comprehensive facilities plan is contingent on the study areas that have been identified. Therefore, I recommend that starting in July of 2021, the Facilities Oversight Task Force recommence to consider the results of the study areas, integrate them into a longer, a larger, longer-term plan. My expectation would be that by December of 2021, that task force would recommend a comprehensive facility plan that includes prioritization of projects and funding mechanisms. So, next steps. And summary. I recommend that the school board act on my recommendation at the June 23rd School Board Meeting and not tonight. This timeline accomplishes a few things. A decision by the board in June is consistent with the timeline that was set in the summer of 2019. The extensive work done by the Oversight Task Force was done over five meetings between January and March of 2020, which was all done before COVID-19. By waiting until June, it gives the board a little extra time for any additional information or data that becomes available. It also provides board members additional time to consider my recommendations and to ask for anything else you need as a full board to make your decision. And in summary, we've been working to address these facility needs, like I mentioned earlier, since 2016. And now we're finally at that place to act. Your approval of my recommendation on June 23rd would result really in three layers of action. The approval of priority level one items, including the addition at Rice Lake Elementary, continued study of the elementary and secondary next generation learning spaces, and the consideration of a combination of a bond referendum and renewal request for the operating levy, capital projects levy for November 22, while continuing to monitor the impact of COVID-19. So as you contemplate your decision, I want to stress that our study groups, committees, and Oversight Task Force, and you as a board, have worked extremely hard to ensure that our plan meets the needs of each and every student and is fiscally responsible. So as superintendent, I can only make recommendations. It is your decision to make and mine to implement. So with that being said, I'll welcome any feedback tonight as I work to draft the action item for June 23rd board meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. In order to keep this somewhat coherent, can we just take questions in the order from Agenda Item Number Six? And then if anyone else has any questions, we can go with that. So Director Douglas, do you have any questions on this item or comments? Thank you. Director Muscata-Jones, do you have any questions or comments for Superintendent McIntyre? Director Muscata-Jones. I think she just exited the meeting. All right, Director Simons, do you have any questions or updates or comments?
Excuse me, I don't have any questions. But I do appreciate the work of all of the committees, and I know the capacity questions are one that the community has been raising, and parents have been raising for some time. So I know it can feel frustrating that it seems like we're still waiting, but the, the capacity requirements for the middle and high school levels do require that referendum. And so I think the committee is wise in looking at the referendum timing on that. It'll continue to be a community conversation and something that we need to continue to hear from our community members and from our parents about their, the capacity concerns that the schools are facing. And I also appreciate that, that we're looking to weave this into a holistic strategy, that it's not piecemeal.
Thank you, Director Simons. Director Muscata-Jones, welcome back. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, apparently. Google Meet didn't like me for a minute. So I'm back. The only thing that I wanted to make sure is, and I, I believe this did happen, is while we were looking at all these recommendations, I love the criteria that we have. And I know that we're always looking at things through an equity lens. Want to make sure that we're working to reduce or eliminate barriers for any students. And I know from my experience that next generation furniture and things like that actually does help with that, but I'm just wondering if there was any conversation on that or how that fit into your decisions.
Well, thank you for the question. I'll quickly respond with, I agree with you that with the right approach with next generation learning, that those can, we can reduce some barriers for student learning, really create greater access for all of our students. So I'll just lead with that and maybe ask Chair Ron Meyer if there was any conversation at the Oversight Task Force, because I know there was in our, our study committee.
And I apologize, I would ask if you could repeat the question, because I got kicked off and I just rejoined about halfway through the question.
I am so glad it wasn't just me, Ron. I got kicked off right before you. My question is, when you were in with the criteria of your decision-making, was also looking at how these things might help reduce or eliminate any barriers for our students?
So with Oversight Task Force in particular, actually, I'll back up. There was a lot of conversation in those study groups that happened in the fall that was looking specifically at both elementary and at the secondary level, that was looking at those next generation spaces. And that was a lot of the conversation, is how do we essentially remove barriers and really personalize that learning for each and every student in our, in our system and in our schools? Yeah, the Oversight Task Force in particular, we certainly had conversations about the, the decision-making criteria, as Superintendent McIntyre talked about. And specifically looking at some of the pieces that were a part of that, being site responsive and the district-wide alignment. District-wide alignment is really making sure that all of us are on the same page across the district and focus on our mission and vision, which is specific around, you know, again, for each and every student and, and that equity piece. So kind of implicit with that is the conversation around removing barriers as part of that. So we didn't get specifically engaged a lot in the conversations at the Oversight Task Force, but there was a lot of conversation that happened last fall in those study groups, which ultimately brought those recommendations that the Oversight Task Force then considered and prioritized and looked at funding options.
Sure, thank you.
May I add something, having been in the task force? So we did talk about how could we do potential pilots? And how could we learn from those? And how could we be thoughtful about where those pilots are conducted to, to, to be across, across the district and learn from them?
Thank you. That helps, thanks.
And I'll just add, as we inventory each individual site moving forward, that'll be a critical component of our work, really identifying those things unique to each school.
I imagine that what we've learned during distance learning might have a piece to play in all of that as well.
And I just would, I would just add that, you know, I do think, you know, that's a good point. But I do know that in terms of talking about the future of our buildings, the capacity and undercapacity issue, that was, that was the reason, looking, considering race and equity for the focus on the undercapacity as well as the overcapacity and being really, really aware and intentional about that conversation as Superintendent McIntyre laid out. So, but yeah, it's good.
Chair Ostaffy?
Thank you.
Chair Ostaffy?
Yes.
It's Barb Wilson. I'm interrupting with apologies to let you know that Google Meet is also, they're having an issue with it in the control room. So they're hearing your audio but not able to pull up the video.
Okay.
So as you speak, it would be helpful if you would each identify yourselves just so that the audio recording is continuing and is being recorded. However, the video is not, Google Meet apparently crashed for them as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Barb. Director Muscata-Jones, thank you for your questions. Director Dawson-Walton, did you have any more questions or comments?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. Director Craig, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, and I'm not sure, in 2018, all music rooms were, or music risers were kind of on a calendar to get replaced. And I know some sites did get an update on music risers. So I'm wondering if under recommendation number three, kind of under the furniture standards again, will music rooms kind of all get an update to their risers at the perhaps elementary level?
This is Superintendent McIntyre, and I'll defer to Ron Meyer to see if, you know, I know they went in detail through individual items, so thank you for the question. And I, it could be in, that particular item could be in one of the priority groupings. So I can't. so I can't see Ron, so I'll just use the audio.
I'm, I'm, yep, I'm here, thank you Superintendent McIntyre. So I would say risers would be something that would typically come through on our capital budget request and process that we do, and certainly as those need replacements, those would continue to come through that capital process. In terms of the recommendations that came forth with the next generation study for elementary and secondary, there wasn't, to my recollection, and I would, I would certainly throw it out to any of the assistant superintendents if I'm misspeaking here, but there wasn't conversation specific to risers as in the course of our conversation, or even as we go out and do the audits for that next generation learning space. But again, there is a process that we do have in place to ensure that those risers are, you know, up to the safety standards and protocols that we would have, and those replacement cycle would go through the typical capital budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Craig, any more questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director McIntyre, I'm sorry Superintendent McIntyre, this is Chair Ostaffy for those who can't see any longer. You mentioned $9 million for the Rice Lake update. That's 30 to 80% higher than what was given as estimates to ECMAC just this past summer and fall. So given that significantly increased budget estimate, there were other options on the table that are coming in at about the same number you just showed, that would have about a 50% greater impact on more students and being able to alleviate those issues even greater. So I'm wondering, given this substantial increase in price, would ECMAC have provided a different recommendation and, because we are relying on that? You know, and, you know, you also mentioned earlier that there's wait lists for certain programs at Weaver, we are overcrowded at Rice Lake, we are also on the verge of overcrowding at Fernbrook. There were other options on the table that would be about the same price, that not only would address Rice Lake, but would address everything else. So just trying to understand where this huge 30 to 80% increase in budget came from, from less than nine months ago.
So I'll make a couple comments, thank you for the question, and then I'll ask Ron to speak a little bit more to that funding side, but yes, there, there have been many choices we could look at. For me personally, my recommendation fell on really trusting the process of our Oversight Task Force and the members of the committee that were represented there, along with the ECMAC members, and also some of the other options would have involved a boundary change to make those things happen ahead of the potential referendum. And I just felt like that, that would have been a challenge for us, and really my belief is looking at a broader boundary change approach once, if, and when that referendum is approved, and once the board, you know, decides to go down that path. So I just felt like any boundary changes ahead of that could be a, a challenge for us to look at a referendum passage. So Ron, I'll, you know, if you want to add any comments around the funding side of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yep. Yep, I will, and, and Chair Ostaffy, you are correct that the numbers for the Rice Lake addition did increase since the ECMAC presentation, and actually occurred through information that came out through the Oversight Task Force, which is that in addition to the, to the overcapacity at Rice Lake, while ECMAC looked at the square footage of our, our cafeteria space, and it was adequate for the number of students that were projected at Rice Lake in our five-year projection, what was happening operationally at Rice Lake and currently is happening is they're having to use some of their cafeteria space for some of the gym classes, because they don't have enough gym space at Rice Lake. So as part of the Oversight Task Force, as we looked at that, our architect put together adding additional gym space at Rice Lake as part of that addition. And so that is what has, has changed that price tag from where it was when ECMAC was looking at it to where it is even today. So it's those additional, that additional gym space on top of the classroom space that we need for those additional students that are currently at Rice Lake, but also projected in the five-year projection.
Thank you, Ron. And are we going to get that update since it is different than what we had talked about just a few months ago, the drawings, the plans for what that actually would be?
So we do have some preliminary drawings, and we're working through even with our architects and working with, you know, we're even going out on a site tour this week, working with the city as well, because as you may know, we co-utilize some of the fields at Rice Lake, and the city jointly operates those with the school district. And so we are still working through exactly where that addition would be placed, where those additional gym space would be, and also trying to tie it into some of the additional work that, as you, as the board knows, because we've talked about it, over the last couple of years, the LTFM work that needs to be done in the interior of Rice Lake. So we're working right now with the, again, if the board does approve moving forward with the recommendation on exactly what that site plan would look like, and we could certainly make that available for board members to see as well, once, as we continue down that path on what works best. Some of the other things that we're looking at is bus parking and parking lots, because we do need some additional parking there as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces with that to determine where it's best to put the addition, as well as the gym space, the parking, the, the bus parking and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And, and, and just to note, this was designed to accommodate about the 200 kids that were currently overcapacity, and some options that are now cheaper than this would have addressed 300 kids. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, it will address the, the, yep, thank you Chair Ostaffy, it will address the approximately 200 students or so that were projected to be overcapacity at Rice Lake. We're about 150 or so above capacity right now at Rice Lake, and we're expected to grow a little bit more in your projection model. Some of the other options that ECMAC did look at could have provided some additional space or relief to, to Rice Lake as well. But again, ECMAC went through an extensive process that are looking at multiple options and landed on the, the two that went to, to the Oversight Task Force, which was the addition at Rice Lake that included a no boundary change option. The other options that we looked at with ECMAC include a boundary change, and then the second one was to build the new elementary school, which the Oversight Task Force continues to have on the, for consideration as we move forward, as we do those additional study groups that Superintendent McIntyre mentioned in his recommendation, as we move forward to understand what those other facility needs are, and then it gives us some additional time to look at the enrollment that, that we're projecting up in that northwest area, but even now, as we look at COVID and trying to understand what might be the impact from an enrollment standpoint as we move forward as well. So those will all be things that we look at as we continue to look at a potential elementary school in that area.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Superintendent McIntyre, do you have any other comments on this?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, that's it for the questions, unless there's any other ones that, that came up. If not, I would like to put us into a brief five-minute recess so that we could fix some of the issues we're having with the meeting, and once we get that going again, we will come back on. So it's 6:59, so let's call us coming back at 7:05 so that Sherry and Randy can reset some things. So if we can do that, I'd appreciate it, and this meeting is now in recess until 7:05. Thank you.